In the last meet of the year include fifth graders Kiefer Anderson, Eva Cron, and Jocelyn Velasquez, as well as eighth grader Samantha Malin. The students were coached in preparation for the Word Masters Challenge by Nancy Leskang, the school district gifted and talented program assistants. As you may recall, at our last distinction presentation, I informed the board that we had, in fact, won this distinction for the ninth year in a row. Well, our music team has done it once again, and in those few short months, the school district has been honored for the 10th consecutive year as one of the best communities for music education. The Best Communities for Music Education is awarded to districts that demonstrate outstanding achievement in efforts to provide music access as well as education to all students. And we are on a streak. I don't think our music educators have any thought of breaking that now. But a special thank you to our music educators Donna Berg, Holly Dow, Jenna Schwire, Amanda Heine, Andrea Hofelder, Bill Callaway, Peter Finnegan, Justin Stager, Don Walden, Sam Fettig, and Kaya Snow. Also, at our last update, we had just found out that our Fort Atkinson High School production of Disney's Little Mermaid had been nominated for multiple Jerry Awards. I'm excited to share with you that Abby Hoffman earned Outstanding Lead Performer and the Spirit Award for her performance as Ariel. In addition, the stage crew earned the Outstanding Stage Crew Award. Those members were Sahana Ahmad, Sarah Betsy, Amelia Belzer, Peyton Bishop, Izzy Burke, Jenka Carter, Mackenzie Cramlett, Chloe Francis, Kylie Frye, Willow Guthridge, Jack Jonas, Wiley Lopez, Hannah Mayo, Ariel Miller, Jessica Nguyen, Vincent Sikowitz, Connor Smith, Avian Atau, Aiden Theroe, and AVI Velasquez. That's quite the stage crew, I think. Congratulations to these students, as well as Director Kaya, or Director, rather, Kaya Snow for all of those who made that production as successful as it was. I'm also excited to share with you that we had two students receive national awards for their artwork this summer. The Annual Scholastic Art and Writing Awards is the nation's longest-running and most prestigious program for creative teens in the grades seven through 12. Jesse Sharp won the National Gold Medal in Sculpture, and Sister Ellie Sharp won the National Silver Award for her art portfolio in the Scholastic Art Awards. Thanks to the support of the community and a successful fundraising campaign, both students were able to travel to Carnegie Hall in New York City to receive their awards at their annual celebration in person. Again, congratulations to Jesse Sharp, Ellie Sharp, as well as teachers at the high school, Angie Zabo and Frank Korp. FFA. Next up, we have a celebration coming to us from the Fort Atkinson High School FFA team. This year, we had two teams qualify for the state competition. Additionally, at the Wisconsin State Convention, our students were awarded with the National Chapter Award Bronze Rating. This is the first time in five or more years that our high school FFA team has earned this award. Congratulations to Kate Heine, Kayden Bates, Julian Boss, Mariah Lupke, Jessica Bash, Caitlin Scheck, Cal Anderson, Mason Brandl, Liam Boss, Mariah Lupke, Kayden Bates, Marnie Draves, Corey Hamilton, as well as advisors Shannon Lyon and Allison Parsons. Our youth apprenticeship is worthy of distinction as it exemplifies our One Team, One District and Community. And just a little background on youth apprenticeship. Youth apprenticeship integrates school-based as well as work-based learning into a student's school experience to instruct students in employability and occupational skills as defined by the Wisconsin Industries. Local programs provide training based on statewide youth apprenticeship curriculum guidelines and are endorsed by business and industry. This year, we had nearly 50 students enrolled in our youth apprenticeships opportunities. Businesses and students will be recognized on social media throughout the rest of the We wanted to take just a moment to recognize our extremely generous community, which helps drives our district and town towards distinction. The graduating class of 2022 was granted over $415,000 in scholarships directly from the Fort Atkinson Community Foundation just this past spring. The amount of generosity towards our hardworking students is something that does not go unnoticed and certainly is not replicated in every community. Thank you to the donors, the selection committee volunteers, and the community foundation for their continued support of our students. Our district, like many others, continue to search ways, for ways to find funding to elevate our teaching and learning. And I am excited to share that Angie Salamoni, our Pupil Services and Special Education Coordinator, has applied for and been granted over $83,000 this year to support our students and programs. These grants will provide our students with two new CNC machines and manual knee mills, two manual lathe machines, and two Powomatic joiners, and as well as curriculum to support a peer-to-peer suicide prevention program. Thanks, of course, to Angie for her continued efforts, as well as others, to elevate the teaching and learning within each of our school buildings. Next up, we have DJ Scullin, our Director of Technology, who played an integral role in securing a $1.96 million grant. Mr. Scullin worked with the city of Fort Atkinson, Jefferson County, and Edge Broadband to secure the grant funds to offer fiber internet in underserved, in unserved and underserved areas surrounding Fort Atkinson. As Mr. Scullin shared with the local media, "As a result of the pandemic, we discovered great inequities within our learning community with regard to access to reliable high-speed internet, essential for learning outside of the classroom." Through frequent and fruitful collaboration with our partners, we are excited to finally bridge the digital equity gap for our entire learning community. I'm also excited to share that Jason Demorath, our Director of Business Services, has been named one of three Association of School Business Officials International 2022 Pinnacle of Achievement Award recipients, which is a mouthful, Jason. As Mr. Demorath shared earlier this year, he created an interactive online district dashboard that keeps the public informed about how our district is using the federal COVID relief funds. Anyone can view this dashboard on our website under the Communities tab. And again, congratulations. Our One Fourteen District and Community needs to continue sharing in our celebrations of success and distinction, leveraging those successes for the betterment of our students, our staff, and of course, our larger community. And with that, I would ask that anyone who is here this evening, who has been recognized, please stand, and we'd like to share a round of applause for you this evening. Thank you.
Thank you for the presentation, Dr. Abbott. It's just always a really good time for a point of reflection. There's so many things that happens throughout the school year, and times I get kind of lost on what happens on a day-to-day basis, so I appreciate that presentation. Alrighty, and moving on, for item number three, comments from the audience on agenda and non-agenda items. Do we have any that were submitted previously?
We do not.
You do not? Alrighty. And with that, we're moving on to the consent agenda.
Yes, Robert's rules provide for a consent agenda listing several items for approval of the board in a single motion. Documentation concerning these items had been provided to all board members in advance to assure an extensive and thorough review and will become part of the permanent record. Items may be removed from the consent agenda at the request of any board member. This evening, the board has Item A, minutes from June 16, 2022 Regular Meeting. Item B, personnel. That includes approval of the following appointments, transfers effective August 24, 2022. Mitchell Obary, a 1.0 FTE vocal music teacher at Fort Atkinson Middle School; Aaron Springstroh, 1.0 FTE Spanish teacher at Fort Atkinson Middle School; Carrie Adelmeier, 1.0 FTE fourth grade teacher at Purdy Elementary; James Lemire, 1.0 FTE fourth grade teacher at Berry Elementary; Jessica Hansen, a transfer to 1.0 FTE second grade teacher at Rockwell Elementary; and Jeff Dye, 1.0 FTE Associate Principal at Fort Atkinson High School, that effective August 1, 2022. Also, the following resignation requests be accepted effective immediately upon satisfaction of the liquidated damages for failure to perform in the amount of $500. That is Margaret Tindell, 1.0 FTE second grade teacher at Rockwell Elementary; Wendy Schmidt, 1.0 FTE reading interventionist at Luther Elementary; Stephanie Raymer, 1.0 FTE social worker at Fort Atkinson High School; and Sarah Klein, 1.0 FTE English teacher at Fort Atkinson High School. Also, the following resignation requests be accepted as of July 5, 2022. Justin Bunkrock, 1.0 FTE technology education teacher at Fort Atkinson High School. Then, Item C, approval of Leanne Shirell as an authorized signer. Item D, gifts to the school district. That includes a donation from Liberty Through Literacy of Books for Intervention classes with an approximate value of $700. And then, Item E, payment of district bills.
Alrighty, thank you. And with that, we would need a motion.
So moved.
I'll second.
Motion by Ms. Rogers, a second by Ms. Reynolds, and that is a voice vote. All those in favor?
That's a real call.
I'm sorry. What's that?
That's real call.
Real call, I'm sorry. I always goof that one up.
Mrs. Reynolds?
Yes.
Mrs. Bookta?
Yes.
Mr. Rogers?
Aye.
Mrs. Sully?
Yes.
Mr. Nickram?
Yes. Alright, and moving on to Section Five, Academic Standards and Parent Notification.
Yes, as required by state statute, a public school board of education needs to take action defining what academic standards will be used in providing that notification to parents and families in our school district. The resolution that is before you shows that we are, in fact, using the state of Wisconsin DPI standards for instruction.
Alright, now we require a resolution. And you, yeah.
It could be presented as read.
Yeah, you can say as read, or you can read the whole resolution.
I'll make that motion. Motion to adopt, that is.
Alright.
I'll second.
Alright, a motion by Ms. Rogers, a second by Ms. Bookta, and that is a voice vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And those opposed. Alrighty. And moving on to high school textbook adoptions.
Yes, as you recall, we were presented, provided a presentation. Wow, it's early in the meeting, too, folks. We were provided a presentation in June related to the adoption of illustrative math at the high school, which would, in fact, make that a continuous math program throughout our elementary, middle, and high school. So that was put on the table last month. This month, you are taking it off the table, and you are making final approval.
Good. Any questions at all in this presentation last month about it? Okay. And we'll read the motion. And again, this one can be read or as indicated here.
Be resolved that the following textbooks be removed from the table and adopted for use in the school district of Fort Atkinson. Illustrated math algebra for use in Fort Atkinson High School Algebra I course. Illustrated math geometry for use in Fort Atkinson High School Geometry course. Illustrated math algebra II for use in Fort Atkinson Algebra II course.
I'll second.
Alright, we have a motion by Miss Sully, a second by Mr. Rogers, and a roll call, Ms. Haas.
Mrs. Sully?
Yes.
Mrs. Reynolds?
Aye.
Mrs. Bookta?
Yes.
Mr. Rogers?
Aye.
Mr. Nickram?
Yes. Alrighty, and new middle school course offerings for next school year.
Yes, also at your last meeting, you received a report from Mrs. Oakley, as well as Mr. Wolf regarding some course changes that we're very excited about at Fort Atkinson Middle School to be implemented for the upcoming school year. So again, this is coming off the table and seeking your final approval.
Any questions at all? Alright.
Be resolved that the following new middle school course proposals for the 2022-23 school year be removed from the table and adopted for use in the school district of Fort Atkinson. Introduction to IT, Information and Technology, Business Concepts 8, Spanish Culture and Conversation, STEM 6, 7, 8, Science, Technology, Engineering, and Mathematics.
I'll second.
Alright, we have a motion from Ms. Bookta, a second by Ms. Reynolds, and a voice vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
And those opposed? Alrighty, moving right along to non-instruction, we have a seclusion and restraint report.
Again, an annual requirement of the board is to approve the seclusion and restraint report. This was provided to the board and is also available to the public from Mrs. Hollenberger, our Director of Pupil Services and Special Education. Mrs. Hollenberger is on hand should you have any questions about the report that was provided.
Thank you. And I know all board members have the opportunity and did read through that report presented to us. Is there any further discussion that we have from anybody at all? Okay. Alrighty, we will need a motion to approve here.
Be it resolved that the Board of Education approves a 2021-2022 seclusion and restraint report. I so moved.
I'll second.
A motion by Ms. Rogers, a second by Ms. Bookta, and all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Here we go. Wasn't sure where that was coming from. And those opposed? Alrighty, moving right along, we have sponsorship agreement for high school gymnasium.
Yes, we're happy to have Mr. Demorath with us this evening on behalf of our sponsorship committee to talk about a sponsorship of the high school gymnasium.
Thank you. So, one of our very first sponsorships from 10 years ago is expiring. It's the Premier Bank sponsorship of the high school gymnasium. This agreement 10 years ago was for $5,000 per year totaling $50,000. As the prior sponsor, Premier Bank, had the right of first refusal, in working with the sponsorship committee and representatives from Premier Bank, we were able to come to an agreement for another 10-year sponsorship of the high school gymnasium. This successor agreement is for a total of $94,000 over the next 10 years. It starts with $8,500 per year for the first two years, then $9,000 per year for the next three years, and then $10,000 per year for the last five years. We made a few minor changes to the district's responsibilities to better match the current times and operations. For example, our programs for athletic events are now digital as opposed to paper, so they would receive a clickable add on those rosters as opposed to a printed add in the program. We're also offering them the stage sponsorship, first stage sponsorship for the Fort Atkinson Show Choir Showcase in 2023 as part of this successor agreement. This is the result of having an entire year under the prior contract where spectators were not in the facility due to COVID, thus a loss of recognition as a sponsor. But it also demonstrates that the stage sponsorship going forward is available in future years for any interested sponsors. Because this agreement totals more than $20,000, the board must approve the agreement according to board policy. So it's before you here tonight for that approval at the recommendation of the sponsorship committee. And we would like to thank Premier Bank for their continued support of our programs and students. And for those local businesses or individuals that are interested in sponsoring a facility or program within the district, please feel free to reach out to myself or Marissa Wydenfeller for more information. And Marissa will be launching on their website a refreshed sponsorship guide soon.
Thank you. When this came across, I was, the first thing I thought was, wow, like, that's been 10 years already since this has begun, so. And secondly, you know, thank you to Premier Bank. They've obviously been a strong community partner of ours for a number of years previous to these 10 years, and this, you know, just, again, just reassures them that, you know, they'll be a gym sponsor again, so thank you for everyone who worked on this.
And where does this money go again?
This money is set aside each, so each year's installment is set aside, and then we'll work with the high school or athletic department to determine what to use the money for as it comes in. We do the same thing with each sponsorship as we, as we secure them and as we get the funds in.
Is my understanding is for capital improvements, though?
Yeah, we're, right now, we're looking at some capital improvements in the gymnasium itself.
Good. Alrighty, any further questions at all?
I would just add, if the community is interested to take a look at the structure of the agreement that is written there, and I think it's a great evidence that a local group or community member or business or industry can make a very significant contribution to the school district and pay for that over the course of several years. It does not need to be an all-at-the-same-time type of agreement, which I hope does make that more appealing for people as they're considering supporting our school district.
On the other way.
And I'd just like to acknowledge the success of the program. I mean, that we have a renewal coming after 10 years, and that same organization is going to renew for another 10 years. That's a huge success to that, and so, I mean, the diligence and the creativity that Jason and Marissa have used, I think, is fantastic, so appreciate that work. And I know I'm looming larger-than-life in the room, so I apologize.
If there's no further discussion or questions, we will need a resolution.
Be resolved that the Board of Education approved the sponsorship agreement with Premier Bank for the high school gymnasium.
Second.
A motion by Ms. Bookta, a second by Ms. Roger, Mr. Rogers, and a roll call, please.
Mr. Rogers?
Aye.
Mrs. Sully?
Yes.
Mrs. Reynolds?
Aye.
Mrs. Bookta?
Yes.
Mr. Nickram?
Alrighty. Moving on to the referendum workshop.
Yes, before we let Mr. Demorath sit down, we're going to ask him to begin our referendum workshop, which builds, of course, on the information the board and community have been provided over the course of years. In most recent months, we've been getting closer and closer to what is it that the future might look like with the school district related to capital as well as operational referenda. Mr. Jason, or Mr. Demorath will begin our presentation, as well as introduce some guests that will be assisting him throughout.
Thank you. As Dr. Abbott stated, the purpose of this strategic plan update this evening is to share some more information and detail regarding the proposed referendum for November, so the board may ask questions and confirm that the plan we'll review with you this evening is what you would like to have on your August agenda for approval in order for it to go on the ballot on November 8. As always, we start with our vision and mission to guide our work, along with our three goals. However, in this presentation, I'm going a bit deeper into our strategic plan to tie what you will be seeing tonight to some of our district beliefs and guiding principles. We haven't referenced these much over the past year, but these also guide our day-to-day work and have been a part of our work throughout this referendum planning process. With regards to our district beliefs, what you will see this evening connects well to the belief that we leverage our resources for student success, including the community's investment in our schools and facilities, and the pride that shows in our partnership and interdependence. The other belief it connects well to is that we invest in our physical capital and showing pride and stewardship for our buildings, equipment, and grounds. In looking at our guiding principles, again, we reference leveraging our resources for student success, with students being our highest priority in all fiscal decisions. This is one of the reasons we are so focused on ensuring our operational dollars so teaching and learning, the core of what we do, can continue. We also hope that you and the public see the fiscal responsibility and transparency of what we're presenting as potential referendum questions and investments this evening. So let me start with this outline of what will be presented this evening, so you get a map of how we will be sharing this information. I'll begin with a recap of our strategic facilities planning process and needs connecting back to what we discussed last month. Our consultants from PRA and CG Schmidt will then present the capital referendum projects and information. I'll then return to share detailed information on the proposed operational referendum, along with an overall summary and a look at the tax implications of what is being proposed. We'll then wrap up with a first look at what the referendum questions might look like on the ballot, so you see them before you approve anything next month. We would like this presentation to be conducted more like a workshop versus a presentation with questions at the end. We'll cover a lot of information on both facilities and operational sides of things, so please stop us and ask questions as they come up. If we will be covering the answer later in the presentation, we'll politely request that you hold the question until we cover that information, and then we'll discuss it at that time. Let's begin now with a recap of where we have come over the past couple of years in our strategic facilities planning. As you know, we had a facilities advisory committee of community members and staff that were charged with developing a long-term master plan for investment in our facilities. This group toured buildings and received detailed information regarding the state of our facilities in order to work through the plan development process. Ultimately, the master plan was determined, along with a phasing timeline. As you see here, the projects that are being finished up at the high school were Phase One, and what we are now discussing in Phase Two, and what we are now discussing is Phase Two. In fact, as we shared last month, we are recommending that Phase Two be further phased over the next few years based on the feedback we received from the community this year. Phase Three will then be somewhere down the road, maybe in about 10 years, to address what we want to do long-term with our four elementary schools. As was shared last month, we now have a modified plan that is being recommended based on community feedback and what we learned over the past 10 months or so. At the high school, we would look to do a secure entry sequence and finalize Phase One projects and continue other maintenance projects, but we would also look at addressing traffic flows. That was a concern that was repeated from the community. Also, with the new development happening just to the east of the property, we have an opportunity in the near future to address this concern in conjunction with the city. At the elementary schools, we would also look to do secure entry sequences and take care of urgent maintenance and mechanical needs to get those buildings through the next 10 years until Phase Three of the plan can be initiated. It is important to note that at these schools, we will not be doing any structural remodeling of learning spaces to modernize and update them. We would only be doing work to have those buildings operate as is for the next 10 years. At the middle school is where we see the largest change. The master plan had called for a replacement of that building by looking to build a new middle school at the high school site. Based on community feedback, the replacement of that building would be put on hold for a few years, and we would look to do a highly modified, secure entry sequence and only tackle maintenance that needs to get that building to operate as is for another five years. So we would be drastically limiting what we are spending at the current building with the thought of a possible new middle school being built in about five years, and we would begin planning for a November 2026 referendum for that middle school building project. The total estimated cost of this modified plan, or beginning, the beginning of Phase Two of the master plan, is $22 million. One of the main reasons for this modified plan is that it has become apparent over the past year that operational costs need to be a focus right now, and so we will also be discussing a proposed operational referendum for November. Going back to the, going back to the reasoning for the further phasing of Phase Two of the master plan, we asked for feedback from our community regarding the plan, and we are listening to that feedback. We heard that there was a concern about increasing taxes, especially after the passage of the city referendum in April. We also heard that with the current economic climate and the high inflation and future uncertainty, the question was being asked if now is the right time to build a new middle school. As a result, you will hear more about the proposed further phasing of our master plan to address these concerns, and I want to stress that we are continuing to work through the same long, long-range strategic master facilities plan. We're just taking our time based on the current environment that surrounds our organization. One of those environmental factors is the election coming this November for the governorship and what that might mean for the next state budget, which will have a large impact on our district. With that coming up, and what we have seen in the last two years with the state budget, our primary concern has shifted to operational funding as a result of no new state revenue and our federal COVID relief funding ending, creating a fiscal cliff that we need to prudently address with long-term vision. One of the ways we are proposing to address this cliff, as well as these capital projects, is through a referendum this fall that implements a plan we have been working towards for quite some time. We have been aggressively paying down our capital debt to get to a point where we could do some capital project work through a referendum this year. That planning, along with an increase in state aid this year with no allowable increase in the revenue limit, has a large impact on our local property tax rate. Just to be clear right off the bat, so the cost-to-taxpayer question can be answered before we get into the details, what we are proposing this evening, and everything you will hear, can be done without an increase to the tax rate. I'll talk in more detail about this later, but wanted that concern of taxpayer costs to be addressed right away, so it isn't a lingering question as you learn more about the projects and the operational referendum amounts and can focus on those details instead. Before I invite our consultants up here, I'll pause for a moment to see if there's any questions at this point.
Jason, when you say there's not going to be a tax rate increase, is that assuming the... the referendum is passed?
Right. Yep.
So even if it is passed, no rate increase?
Right. Right. There would be no, no, no tax rate increase with what we're proposing this evening.
That's awesome. That's just awesome. You know, that there won't be, if this passes, there won't be an increase. That's just, that's crazy, but it's amazing at the same time.
We've been working towards it for a while, and I'll go into more detail about that later.
Well, it's my understanding that we paid off pretty much all our past debt.
Right. Capital debt will be paid off here in the very near, near future, which is part of what we've been working towards to make this happen, knowing that it's coming.
Wow.
Can you talk a little bit, and you might be having this later in your presentation, if you are, just, you know, tell me to pause, but can you talk a little bit about, you know, we're coming off of a referendum that ends in 2023, now we're looking to put another one on. What, this cycle that we do with operational referendum, that's, that's kind of at the planning of the state, right? At how, how they want local tax dollars to go towards districts? Can you talk a little bit about just why we're always looking to do operational referendums?
Sure. At the state level, funding for school districts over the past several years, the, the cost for that has been shifted more to the local taxpayer, because we haven't been seeing increases from the state that keep up with inflation or the Consumer Price Index, which is what our salary increases are tied to by state law. So the, over, there's been a trend over the last several years, almost a decade now, where number one, revenue increases from the state are unpredictable. Each two-year cycle, budget cycle at the state level, we have no idea what's coming. And number two, there's been a desire to shift that to the local taxpayer, as opposed to coming from the state.
And the only way to shift it to the local taxpayers is for the district to do it through a referendum?
Right. The only way we can exceed the state-imposed revenue limit is through a referendum.
And that's because there's levy limits in place.
Right. Yep. Okay. With that, I'll invite Nick Kent from Plunket, Plunket Research Architects up to begin the discussion around the capital referendum projects, who will then turn it over to Dan Chovanik from CG Schmidt, our construction manager.
Thank you, Mr. Demerath. It's good to see you all again this evening. Before we turn this over to Dan to actually take us through in a little bit more specificity what is included in this referendum, potential referendum question, I wanted to take just a minute to consider the context within which this question is being considered. If we think back to when we started down this path, now nearly four years ago, considering the facilities within this community, we said at the outset that we don't know where this path is going to take us. We have to approach this with an open mind, and we have to think objectively about what the outcomes may be. We also said we don't know what the timeline may look like for implementation of whatever those solutions may be that we come, that we come up with. So as Mr. Demerath shared earlier, we, we thought we had a plan to phase this in three chunks, but through what I think is, is really a true, rich, and authentic dialogue with the community, we have refined that, that, that approach to implementation of our master plan. And it's really important for us. I think it may be, when you look at that slide that says modified, and we crossed out the middle school, it's really important for us to remember that we are not saying we are not going to pursue a new middle school project, as we said before. That's just coming down the road a little bit further. So this is being tuned to where the community as a whole is, and we want to make sure that we're not losing sight of the larger vision that will take some time to fully implement. So the things that we're going to talk about tonight, the things that you will consider as a potential referendum question, are very intentional, and those are selected to fit within the larger framework of that facility's master plan. So the things that are included, and we'll hear more about what those are in a minute, those are very purposeful, and they are very practical, and all of those work towards the larger objective of creating the best possible learning spaces for the students here within our community. So all of this is done against that backdrop. The work that has been done over these years by the district staff, by the board, by the FAC, and thanks to the community for providing the input and the guidance to this effort, that is all very, very important, and that is the foundation upon which all of these projects will be pursued. So we're going to get into this now, here. What is it that we're actually talking about within this potential question? And I want to touch, again, just very briefly on this first piece, because this is probably what will be the most obvious to people if this project is executed, and that is the secure entrance sequences that will be installed at each of these schools. And yes, the heart of this is security. It's making sure our schools are as safe as they can be, but it's also about creating spaces that are welcoming. We are not trying to create fortresses here. These are welcoming community spaces and learning spaces. So when we think about what a secure entry is, it is not a solid door that blocks you from accessing the building. It is a welcoming sequence of events that will allow visitors to come to the door. They will come into a vestibule, but not into the school. When they come in out of the elements, if it's cold, it's rainy, whatever it may be, they are greeted by a glass door that has visibility into the office, so the staff that will let them into the building can see them visually, but it is a locked and secured door. That's where that intercom, that air phone would be, where you communicate back in, you state your purpose, like we have today in the schools, and then that door is released. The person is supposed to be there. That person now enters into the office, presents credentials. We verify that the person should, is, is appropriate to be within the school. Once that is secure, there's a second locked door from the office into the school itself, so we are adding a layer of security. A secure entrance sequence is meant to be welcoming, but also physically require a visitor to come into the office to meet face-to-face with another person, and then be let into the building. So it's very much about bringing people, person-to-person contact, but also providing multiple checkpoints before they are allowed in. So I think there was a little bit of question about what that really, what that really means. And this will actually be the place where people will come in contact with these projects that we are proposing. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to my colleague, and we'll see what it all is included in this. Thanks, Dan.
Thank you, Nick. So what I'm really going to spend most of the time on is what is included in that capital referendum, and then the costs associated with that. I'm also going to go over if the referendum were to move forward and pass, what that timeline would look like to complete all that work, what the impact would be on the start and end of the school year, and potentially extending that, that time to do that work over the summer, and then some of the market impacts that, that we're all aware of, inflation, you know, labor shortage, things like that, and what our strategies are to, to deal with that. Just do the arrow here. So what I'm going to start off with is the elementary schools. And as Jason said, what we looked at is, over the next ten years, if we were just to maintain those schools, what would that look like? What would need to be done, and what does that cost associated with that? And what we looked at is, you know, the high priority items, the ones that are going to have the biggest impact. And the way we set this up for all the schools, as I showed to the, I think it's everyone's left here, is graphically, what percentage of that cost is going to the different components of the building. As you can see here, for Berry Elementary School, there's about 25% of this is going into general building items, which I'll kind of explain what that is, and then 26% in electrical, and then the rest kind of, you know, make up the, the rest of the percentages, the rest of the building components. So when you look to the right here, here's where I have a kind of a high level description of what's included there. There's other things as well, and some of that cost associated with that. So the general building, in, in this case, it's looking at the exterior of the building, looking at if any tuck pointings needing caulking, window repairs, mason repairs, things like that, and addressing those major items. Also looking inside the building at some of the finishes, the carpet, the ceiling, and where it's kind of at the end of its life, it's worn out, needs to be replaced, you know, starting to replace that. Looking at bathrooms, making those ADA compliant, things like that, any doors that maybe need, need repair, and that's about $758,000 for that. We also looked at the roofs. There, in 2019, I believe, there was a roof study done, a roof report done, and it looked at the lifespan of the roofs, and it gave, it gave a lifespan for each one. It was, it was broken up into different sections on the roof. All the roofs weren't done at the same time. So what we did is, we looked at the next five to 10 years, when those roofs would need to be repaired, and included that cost in there, so we could address that. The one 10 years plus, they have a little more life on them. We're going to leave those alone for now. Fire protection, your current buildings don't have a sprinkler system in them. Not, it wasn't required by code when it was built. As long as we don't renovate more than 50% of the building, we don't need to add that to the building, so we left that out for now. Plumbing, not a lot of plumbing, just kind of dressing, some water piping, replaces some old galvanized pipe with copper. Mechanical, that's a little bit of a bigger item that we wanted to address, so it was looking at the outside air rooftop unit, looking at some heat pumps, replacing those, and then a few other things as well. Electrical, electrical, looking at some of the older panel boards, replacing those, taking the old fluorescent lighting, putting in LED lighting. It's much more energy efficient, it's better on your eyes, as you're in a learning environment, and, as well as a few other things there. And then, as Nick had mentioned, the secure entrances. So each building, we looked at the secure entrances, and we put some money aside to, to address that. So that was about $2.5 million for Berry. And we did the same thing with Luther Elementary. So you can see graphically there, mechanical, 32%, roofing, 31%. So a little different makeup of what's needed, but that's where a lot of the, the needs are at this building. So general building, there were some old nine-by-nine tiles that need to be abated, some enclosure items that we addressed, some, some of the major cracks and things like that. Just, you know, dressing those so we can extend the life and it doesn't cause any further damage. Any kind of roof leaks, things like that, door, doors that need to repair, ceilings, all those things are made up in that $1 million. Roofing, there were some roofs on, on this building that needed to be repaired in the next couple of years. So we are including that cost, about $1.5 million, so there's quite a bit that's going to be done at this school, and we want to, we want to fix that so that it doesn't cause any future damage or future leaks and things like that. Plumbing, not a whole lot there, kind of the same thing, looking at cast iron galvanized pipe. Mechanical, we are looking at, you know, upgrading, replacing some of the components of the HVAC, you know, the heating and cooling system. So also looking at the controls, taking the old pneumatic controls, going to digital, looking at the VAV system, replacing the chiller pumps, replacing a boiler, things like that. So about $1.5 million there. So we're addressing a lot of those maintenance needs with that system. Electrical, almost $1 million. So we're looking at a new generator, new PA system, you know, new LED lighting, new electrical panel boards, and of course, secure entrances here. And each, each building has different requirements for the secure, secure entrance. Some are kind of set up where we don't need a lot to do it, others, we got to do, do a little more work. So here, it's, it's a little easier to do that, so it's a little, little lower price point. So here, we're about $4.2 million for Luther. And then Purdy, same sort of thing. So we're, a lot of items are in the general, electrical, and then the secure entrances. So general, a lot of the things we've been talking about, the ADA bathrooms, addressing any of those major cracks, looking at the flooring and ceilings, and upgrading those where needed, the gym floor, looking at, you know, getting a ramp up to the stage, things like that. Roofing, we looked at that six to 10 years again, any of the roofs that need to be replaced, sections of the roof, we included that in this cost. Plumbing, it's kind of been consistent along, just a lot of that, you know, that cast iron pipe, galvanized pipe, things like that, we were addressing there. Mechanical, looking at the heat pumps again, you know, having, we had a plan, a phase plan here to start upgrading, replacing all those heat pumps, the outside air rooftop unit, things like that. Electrical, light fixtures, GFI, GFI receptacles, panels, LED lighting, things like that. And here, at Purdy, there's a little more involved in getting that, a secure entrance there, so there's a, there's a bigger dollar there, about $700,000 for that. In total, about $5.7 million at, at this school. Rockwell Elementary. So this one, we had a lot of general items that needed to be addressed, about 44% of the, the cost and the work is, is going there. So I'll spend a little bit of time on that, and then all the other building systems, you can see, are about the same, about that, you know, that 12% to 15%. That general building, about a little over $1 million, 1.1. There's a lot of doors that, that need either be replaced or repaired, so we have that included. We looked at doing some additional parking stalls there, looking at ADA, ADA accessible bathrooms and, and, and the stage as well, dumpster enclosure, gym replacement, and there's many other things that are included in here too, but I tried to pick the, you know, the, the bigger items that had some of the bigger price points to them. Roofing, roof's fairly decent shape, but we still had about a half million dollars in there to address that, those areas where it had a lifespan of about six to 10 years. Plumbing, not, not too much there, just replacing some of that galvanized piping. Mechanical, about a half a million dollars there. That was, again, the heat pumps, you know. There's a whole plan in place to start up, you know, replacing all those older heat pumps that are at the end of their lifespan. We also had a hot, hot water boiler for the geothermal loop. Electrical, about $300,000 there. Panel boards, LED lighting, things like that. We also did arc flash studies in all the schools, and the reason we wanted to do that is just to make sure it's safe. It's, it's looking at those panels, make sure they're labored properly, understanding what is the energy that's being exposed to the people working on those, and then making sure they have the right personal protective equipment when working on those, and making sure they're safe. So that was more of a safety item there. And then secure entrances. So that was about $2.7 for Rockwell. So the high school, we're currently doing work there, finishing that up, but there's still a few more items we want to look at over the next 10 years. A lot of it's on the mechanical side here, as you can see on that, that pie graph, and then also in the general items. General, a lot of the same things I've been talking about, enclosure, flooring, resurfacing a tennis court, things like that are just kind of wearing out and need to be upgraded. Roofing, a little bit of roofing there. The roof's in pretty good shape overall, so it's just replacing some flashing in some areas over the administration area. Plumbing, not a whole lot there. Mechanical, here's looking at the fans and the motors on the air handling units, and, and replacing those components. Not the entire air handling unit, but some of those components that'll extend that life over the next 10 years. VAV maintenance, same thing, replacing chillers, pumps. So there, we had, you know, quite a bit, about $1.9 million there that we'd be investing in the, in the high school. And then electrical, you know, some fire alarm, panel boards, that arc flash study that I described, and then the secure entrance there. That one's, you know, it wouldn't take a whole lot to get, to improve that security at the, at the high school. So about $2.7 million at the high school. Then the middle school. As we talked about, others talked about earlier, you know, in the master plan, the middle school would kind of be pushed out to that 2026. So we did, so what we wanted to do here is look at over the next five years, what do we need to do to maintain that middle school, but not over-invest money into that school. And here, a lot of the items were the roofing and that, those general building, general building items. So some of those cracks, older tile, some doors that need to be repaired. There's some older casework that could be upgraded, that would really improve the, you know, the student's learning environment. Roofing, so we did have some roofs there that we needed to address, so we, we included that. There's some that only have a lifespan of a couple of years, so we included cost to address those, because they could cause a lot of other damage if, you know, we didn't take care of those. A little bit on the plumbing side, nothing in mechanical, electrical, and then dressing a secure entrance for safety reasons at the middle school. So about $2.21 million there. So this is just in summary, is what is, what makes up that entire $22 million. We show it graphically there, so you can see that the general building items, mechanical, make up a good portion of that, and then electrical and roofing make up the second-most portion of that work. And then I have the cost to the right there for each, each one of those. The one thing I did talk, talk about is the one at the bottom, the road improvement. So this would be at the high school. This would be getting accessibility to the west side. We don't know exactly what that would be, it's just an allowance at this point, but we wanted to include some money for that. We also, you know, just with inflation we're seeing, we wanted to have a little extra contingency, so there's a little contingency built into that, you know, a little over $1 million there too. So that, that, that was what makes up the $22 million that, that I just described. So I said a lot here. Are there any, any questions on anything that I went over?
We're probably getting ahead of ourselves, but has any thought been given of what we're going to do with the middle school, if and when? We abandon it and build a new one?
Yeah, I mean, we talked about different options. Do you, do you leave it and sell it? Do you, you know, do we demo it and then just kind of restore the site to a park area or something like that? So there's different, different, different options with that, but nothing's been decided.
I, I believe that there is, there's studies done on obviously all the buildings back in 2019, is that right? I think it indicated that. Do we feel like we've done a, like an ample job of better understanding what's maybe happened the last three years, to make sure that we're kind of, we're getting everything that, that needs to be paid attention to?
I, I think we did, yes. What, when we looked at this- When we looked at this initially, we looked at everything in elementary schools, you know, over the next 10 years, and then, you know, middle school at about five years to maintain those. And we were over 25 million when we first looked at that. So we kind of got together as a group, Josh, Jason, myself, Nick from PRA, and we really looked at what are the most impactful things, the highest priority things that need to be addressed? And that's where we kind of got that number into that 21 million range, somewhere in there. So we really spent some time focusing on what what are the biggest needs and and making sure that we address those in this capital referendum.
Sure. Thank you.
So it appears that there's a lot of similar work that needs to be done at the different schools. Is there an advantage to doing this all at the same time in terms of bidding and it's one contractor ordering more equipment at the same time that's going to be installed? And I guess I also, a follow up to that question is, do you typically see this in districts where it's kind of cyclical, that you have to address similar concerns at buildings?
Yeah, and I'll go over kind of our strategy on how that work would go in place and how we would bid that out. I'll go over that next with the timeline. But yeah, every school is a little bit different. It just all depends, you know, that's kind of, that's why this group got together and did this master planning, so we had a long term plan on how to maintain these buildings, how to replace them, how to upgrade them over the next 10, 20 years and beyond. So that was kind of the purpose of of us of us doing this. But yeah, I mean, every school is is really different on on their strategies, on how they, you know, on how they address all these different maintenance needs and things like that. And it's usually, I think, you know, the best approach is, you know, address these maintenance needs, but also then kind of have a plan on replacing some of these older buildings so you're not having to do it all at at one time. And that's kind of what what this group has done and the approach that we're taking here. So I'll kind of, I'll answer your, the other part of your question right here on how we would bid this out and contractors and things like that. So I put together a very high level timeline of how this work would be put in place. So if this this resolution, you know, would be approved, then it would go to referendum and the community would support it, that would be November 8th. And then after that, we'd go right into design. And there's really three phases to this project. There's kind of the phase that needs design, and that's in blue, shown on this timeline. So we do that design, that'd take four to six months, some things would take a little, go a little quicker, some take a little more time. There's a plan review process that would that we'd have to do with DSPS, the city, things like that, usually about 30 to 60 days, so I have that in there. And then we go into that that bidding. So that would all, you know, we look at getting that bid out, in this case, you know, early, late spring, early summer, that we bid all that out, then there's some middles, materials would have to be ordered. And then we look at starting to put that work in place already in like winter break of '23 and then finishing that all up in '24, most of that happening over the summer and some of that during spring break. Now, in gray there, there's a little, there's a kind of a phase two timeline. These are the things that wouldn't need design, that we could start right away. So we'd go, we'd look at bidding that out right away and then getting any some middles, going through that, ordering all that material, and then, you know, starting that work. And that could start as soon as, you know, spring break of '23, and then, you know, the majority of that work happening in the summer of '23, and then anything that would need to finish up, we do in, you know, over winter break in that year. Now, there's also going to be some things that I think could happen during the school year that wouldn't be disruptive, wouldn't be noisy, wouldn't be disturbing students and staff, and we try, and that's the green area, and we try and do as much of that during the school year as we could, as long as we're not disrupting, you know, the learning environment. You know, on this next slide here, I can, I think I can kind of address then some of the, you know, how we would approach the the bidding and contractors and and some of that economy of scale and things like that.
Before you do that, I'm just assuming that if the referendum passes, we'll be borrowing the money through bonds, is that right?
Correct.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, and that's something Jason could probably talk a little bit bit more about, but yes, that's correct. So impacts, I'll start off with the impacts on the school year. So we talked a little bit about maybe potentially adjusting some of the dates on when school ends, when it starts, so that we have the maximum amount of time in that summer to get that work done. Maybe we look at winter break, things like that, but that's when we'd want to really do the majority of that work so we wouldn't be disturbing, you know, students and and teachers during the school year. Some of the market impacts, and this kind of, I kind of can address your questions with this as well. So inflation, we are seeing a lot of inflation in construction right now, we're dealing with that every day, and we have different strategies on how to deal with that. And I think for for your projects, what we would do is, even though this work is happening in '23 and into '24, we would bid all that out in spring, early and late spring of '23. And by doing that, we can lock in those numbers. And then we know that we can get them a contract, lock those numbers in, so we don't have to worry about that that volatility that we're seeing. So that's one strategy. Another one is, we we added, we, this facility's assessment was done in 2019, and it had inflation in there, but it had typical inflation, which is in that 3% to 5% range. We added about 12% to all these numbers to address this inflation that we're seeing is above and beyond what is typical. So these numbers have extra money in there. We also, contingency, we put some contingency in this as well, just so that if we go to bid this out, we're seeing more, things are coming in a little higher, we have some contingency to to address that. Labor, so there are labor shortages going on right now, and I think some advantages that we have is Fort Atkinson is, we have an office in Milwaukee, one in Madison, and we have very good relationships with all the subcontractor community in those areas and everything in between in Fort Atkinson, which is about halfway in between. So we have a large base of contractors we can go to, to, you know, to bid this project, and we're going to tap into all of them, as well as local contractors as well, because that's going to be very important to give them an opportunity and be part of this project. So our strategy on subcontractors, there's different strategy, you can have one contractor do all the work, one electrician, one HVAC. I think what we would do on this one is have multiple contractors because, so that they have enough horsepower, enough labor to do the job. And I think we can, you know, potentially, we can get some better pricing by doing that, and we can also give some opportunities to some local contractors as well to do, to be part of this project. With the labor as well, kind of addressing that labor shortage is CG Schmidt, we self-reform, select demolition, carpentry, concrete. So we can control those labor forces and control the cost, the schedule, the quality, the safety. So that's going to give us an advantage there. So the work associated with those trades, there's opportunities where we we could do that as well.
Who's going to be supervising the construction set?
That would, that would be CG Schmidt. We would have a superintendent that would be onsite, that would be overseeing the work. We'd probably assign them to several schools and they'd be bouncing around, or probably there might be two people that would bounce around just because there's a lot, you know, there's six different schools that work would be happening at. And then we'd also have a project manager who would, and their roles are a little different, one's more focused on getting the administrative things done, managing the costs, things like that. The other one is onsite, you know, managing all the subs every day and coordinating all the work. Hopefully I answered your question, it was a long-winded answer, but with that.
What what percentage would not need design of the 22 million, do you foresee?
We haven't actually got a percentage on that, but what we would do is I'd sit down with Nick from PRA, and we would, we'd have to determine that is is what would be needed. Like, some of the, you know, mechanical, electrical systems would probably need some design. Those are a little bigger dollar amounts, you know, the roof, we'd want them to look at to make sure that we had the right insulation, the right R value, the right system, you know, put in place there. So there's things like that. I don't know, what what do you think, Nick? The security, I'm sorry, yes, the secure entrances, that would be one that we definitely want, design would be needed on that. We, you know, we want to make sure everything is code compliant as well, and that's why...
Yeah, that's, I was wondering what percentage wouldn't need design and what examples, like, I mean, maybe switching out light fixtures, but you still have to spec them and then get some middles and everything, so.
Yeah.
Most of it would probably need design, I guess, is what I'm asking.
You know, maybe what, 75%, something like, maybe a little less, 50 to 75%. I think some examples of things that wouldn't would be like if we needed to fix a crack or some caulking or tuck pointing on the exterior of the building, replacing a drainage issue outside, you know, there's, if a door needs to be replaced, you know, it, you know, that's something we can, it'd be minimal, minimal design that would be needed for that. Ceilings, you know, we would want to get their input on what is the best, you know, ceiling tile that they would recommend, flooring as well, colors, but, you know, it would be, you know, not not as much design needed for that, but. So we try and do that just where needed and make sure that we're being very conscientious as how that how that money was being spent.
I don't know if this is a question for you or Jason, but is there a plan as how we're going to promote the referendum? So it does pass?
Absolutely.
Are you involved in that, or?
Yeah, that's my my counterpart, Sarah Dunn, who isn't here, isn't here today, her daughter's birthday is today, but yeah, she, that's where she comes in, and she'd help with that communication plan and getting that, you know, communicating this to the community, informing them on what we're doing, and just so that they have all the information they need so they can make, you know, an informed decision in in November. But yes, we would be, we'd be involved with us as well as others here in promoting that, or not necessarily promoting that, we would be promoting that, we would be educating the community on what that is. Any other questions? All right, then I will turn it over to Jason.
Before I move on to the next slide, though, I'll mention the the impact on school year start and end with this referendum being in November. We would then know as we set the calendar for '23, '24 in December, January, February timeframe, if we wanted to adjust anything in the '23, '24 school year to accommodate the work. So the timing from that standpoint on the impact of the calendar is is good as well. Okay. Thanks, Nick and Dan, and I'll shift the focus to operational referendum and share some detailed information about what is proposed on that side. Since last month's meeting, we've continued our work with Baird, our financial advisor, regarding debt structure and wrapping the capital debt around an operational referendum. What's now proposed for operational amounts is a bit cleaner than the initial numbers that were shared, but gets us to the same endpoint in 2025, '26. We're proposing that the current nonrecurring amount of $3 million that expires at the end of this year be shifted to recurring this year, just as we have done with our prior two nonrecurring referenda that expired, where we then came back for voter approval to make those nonrecurring amounts recurring going forward. With no new revenue projected at this point, given the uncertainty at the state level, we would then ask for $4 million nonrecurring in both '23, '24 and '24, '25, and $5 million nonrecurring in '25, '26. All of these nonrecurring amounts would be one-time amounts, just in those particular fiscal years, they do not carry over from year to year. I will also transparently share upfront that what is actually levied for operations in 2023 through 2026 will depend on the financial changes that take place between now and then. Since the final year is four years from now, we'll see a couple of state budgets between now and then that would impact us. So the board in those years will have to take external factors like that into account each year as they set the levy. What we, what we would be asking for here in the referendum is permission that these are the maximum amounts that would be levied, but they could possibly be less based on what changes may come our way. As we have demonstrated through our phasing of the strategic facilities master plan, we're always sensitive to our impact on the community and will carefully consider things each year as we go through the next few years of this operational referendum. What you can see here is the impact that this operational referendum would have on our operations budget. With no new revenue from the state being forecasted, you can see in red the significant operational deficits we face even with the attritions we made this year and only factoring in salary and wage increases each year of 3%, even though inflation is pushing 9% right now. If we focus on just the years that this operational referendum would cover, I'll start with mentioning that we are always planning longer term than one year. So what we see here is the three years of our current referendum, followed by the three years of the proposed referendum. If we look at the cumulative deficit over the course of these combined six years, it would be $1.6 million even with the proposed referendum, given no new revenue from the state. In thinking longer term as we do, we would have four years to address this 1.6 million through additional attritions, strategic abandonments, and/or new state revenue through the next two biennial budgets. During these upcoming years, we will also be considering whether or not to continue the positions being funded by the Esther Federal COVID Relief Funds as those funds expire. We believe managing this cumulative deficit over this time is achievable without a significant impact to programming, and will carefully consider how to manage it each fiscal year through our annual budget development process. Now let me summarize everything that you heard this evening, as well as illustrate again the projected tax impact of what is being proposed. Through the management of our debt and the full retirement of that debt on the horizon, coupled with an increase in state aid without a revenue limit increase, we're able to do everything that was discussed this evening with minimal impact to the tax rate over the next four years. I'll illustrate this further in a moment. To summarize, the total referendum package being proposed for November 8th, on the capital side, we would install secure entries and address urgent maintenance need, urgent maintenance needs at all six of our buildings, as well as improve traffic flow at the high school site as the new neighborhood comes online over there, for a total cost of $22 million that would be financed through 20-year bonds. On the operational side, we would have one question with two parts. The first part is for $3 million recurring beginning this year, and the second part is for $4 million nonrecurring in '23, '24 and '24, '25, and then $5 million nonrecurring in '25, '26. I'll again mention that through this referendum, we're asking voters permission to levy up to those amounts. So these would be maximums that we could levy, but as the financial environment changes (cough) excuse me, over the next (cough). As as the financial environment changes over the next four years, the board could consider levying, levying less than those amounts accordingly. In addition to these referendum questions this fall, we'll continue to plan and message for a referendum in November 2026 to build a new middle school. You may recognize this slide that has been used throughout the budget planning process this spring and summer. To revisit where we came from over the past seven months, in January, we had our initial projection shown in blue. We then received information regarding the Consumer Price Index and health insurance increases, which made the financial picture worse, as shown in orange. This spring, we worked through attritions and health insurance changes, as well as a full CPI increase and market increase for our team that not only got us back to the original blue position, but in even better shape, as shown in green. With the operational referendum proposed this evening, we would end up at the yellow line where we would be able to sufficiently operate through '25, '26 before a successor operational referendum in conjunction with the November 2026 middle school referendum would be needed. To illustrate the tax rate impact of everything you heard this evening, we have the tax rate history you saw earlier, along with the projection for the next five years, added here, incorporating this referendum, as well as a preliminary look at the tax rate in '26, '27 with the new middle school. As you can see, and as mentioned earlier, there is room in the current year's tax rate to do everything we shared this evening with a minimal tax rate impact. In fact, over the course of these four years, it is our intention to keep the tax rate steady should this referendum be approved by the voters. We say that, but also want to be transparent with taxpayers about how this will impact their personal taxes. I want to stress again that it's our intention to keep the district's portion of the tax rate stable over the course of this referendum through 2025, '26. Based on the feedback we receive from the community during our year-long, meaningful community conversation with focus groups, surveys, and open forums, we know that taxes are a worry right now. We also want to be completely transparent and upfront about what it means when we say that it's our intention to maintain a stable tax rate for district operations. So what does this mean for the local homeowner and taxpayer? It means that if a home's value increases, the school taxes on that property will increase accordingly. So if a home value increases 7%, then school taxes on that property increase 7% because that additional value would be taxed. It also means that if there's an increase in the cost of private school vouchers, the tax, the school tax rate and taxes on the home... school tax rate and taxes on the homeowner's property will increase as well. We are simply told by the state how much to tax local taxpayers to pay for private school vouchers, and that's the only information we receive. This portion of our school tax levy is simply a pass-through mechanism for the local taxpayer to pay for private school vouchers. So while it's our full intention for the tax rate for public school operations to remain stable for the next four years, these two factors will impact how our property tax owner's bill changes from year to year over those four years. This graph further illustrates the impact of private school vouchers on the tax rate. You can see that the public school tax rate has remained stable since 2018-19 and would remain stable under these proposed referendum questions. In fact, it is lower and projected to continue to be lower than the tax rate a decade ago. However, over the past few years, the private school voucher part of the tax rate, as shown in red, has continued to increase. We show that part of the tax rate remaining the same at this point because we get no information whatsoever about how many students are using private school vouchers or are projected to use private school vouchers. We don't know how much the state wants us to tax our local taxpayers each year for these vouchers until October of that year. Based on prior trend, it would appear that this part of the tax rate could continue to increase, but we have no idea what to project because we have no information to make any assumptions. Before I get to the final portion of the presentation regarding the actual referendum question templates, are there any questions about the operational side of the referendum, the total referendum package, or the tax impact of the referendum?
So for the private school vouchers, we collect the money and then write a check to the state?
Right, yep. They withhold it from our final aid payment in June each year.
I don't have any questions.
I do. So, sorry, going back to like the maintenance on the buildings and stuff, you... Some of the things, like we weren't ADA compliant, can you tell us how much of the buildings are... Need to be brought up to those standards?
Brought up to ADA standards?
Yeah. Or if there's any others, does that make sense?
Yeah, so I guess I'll start and you guys can jump in then. Whenever there's significant remodeling, like Dan had talked about, that's when they need to become ADA compliant. Some of the things that we're doing is to get ahead of that and make our buildings more inviting to that population. So it's not required because we're not remodeling necessarily, but we want to make sure that there's access available. I don't know if you want to talk further about that?
So this is always, or almost always, something that comes up when we have older facilities. The building code, our state building code, requires us to allocate up to 20% of our project budget when we're doing renovations to address non-compliance accessibility issues within any given building. We don't have to address all of them, but we do have to use a portion of our budget to do that. So this is normal, these are normal things, like the stage behind you all that does not have an accessible route to it. Under current code, it would require it, so we are accommodating to all users. What percentage of the total buildings are non-ADA compliant? That's a little bit challenging to put a number to. Things like a doorknob is not an accessible piece of a building. That doesn't mean the room behind the door is not accessible, it just means that piece of the building is not. So from a budgetary standpoint, how much of this is going to address accessibility? It's probably around that 20%, but along with that 20%, like we renovate a bathroom, you not only address accessibility, you address the plumbing issues in there, the electrical issues, the flooring issues, it all kind of gets packaged together. So it's not a direct answer to your question, but there's a significant chunk of this budget that will be addressing it.
Okay. And how much in, like, all of the buildings, do we need to be brought up to code or any of changing codes in the future, if you know of any of those? Does that make sense?
How much of this is related to code changes? Is that kind of your question?
Yeah, because each year, I know that, you know, codes and standards are changing and they upgrade. How much of our buildings need that to come up to, you know, to come up to the standard?
That's not, honestly, that's not a significant portion of this. Most of this, most of this is really addressing age, wear and tear, normal things like we would address in our own homes, right? So a roof, you can expect a 20-year lifespan, give or take, on a roof. It's really not a code issue, per se, it's a, it's worn-out issue. We need to make sure it keeps us warm, safe, and dry.
Okay. That just makes me feel better. That our buildings are still pretty good, they just need to be...
Yeah, and understand, you are absolutely correct. Codes do change, they do evolve over time, and there are mechanisms that allow, if a building was built correctly under the code in place at that time, it's perfectly allowable to leave it alone until such time as you change it. When you change it, of course, you have to bring it up to current code. That doesn't mean it's inherently not safe, it's just something that's changed in time.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions before I move on? Okay. All right, finally, let's get to what the actual questions on the ballot would look like, so the board, so that as the board considers approval of the referendum next month at your meeting, you have an idea of what the voters would see. I'll also talk about what might happen if the referendum is not successful. This is what would appear on the ballot for the operational question. As you can imagine, it gets quite complicated with different amounts and recurring and non-recurring portion. It will be important to communicate prior to the referendum what this question means and what voting yes and voting no on this question means. This is what would appear on the ballot for the $22 million debt issuance for the capital improvement portion of the referendum. A bit simpler here, as the voter is just approving whether or not the district can issue $22 million in general obligation bonds. Just a couple of quick notes on these questions. They're designed in accordance with state statute by our attorney, and we're prohibited from stating anything about tax impact within the question itself. We are able to determine the order on the ballot of which question is first, and at this time, we're recommending that the operational question comes first, as that's the most important question, but also the most complicated on the ballot. So we wanted that one upfront. And right at the outset of the conversation surrounding this referendum, we want to address some questions that we believe will be top of mind for our community. As we go throughout the fall and communicate this referendum, we'll continue to compile questions and answers and share them out, but we're assuming these will be the first questions asked at this point. First one is why are we going to referendum this fall with both operational and capital questions? As I had illustrated earlier, we have a one-time window of opportunity where our current debt gets retired and we see an influx of state aid without a corresponding revenue limit increase. This results in the ability to do everything we talked about this evening with minimal impact to the tax rate. What if one question passes and one fails? If there is a question that fails, we'll be back in April of 2023 with another referendum question related to whichever one fails, as the operational capital needs are not going away. Should the capital question pass and the operational question fail, we will keep the tax rate at the current level and begin paying off as much of that capital debt as possible to set us up for another operational question in April. Will taxes decrease if both questions fail? Yes, taxes will decrease for the current 2223 fiscal year, but we'll levy to pay off all of our current outstanding debt, and we'll be back in April with both questions as the needs are not going away.
Jason, getting back to the form of those questions. Are, is the form of the questions, is that something that can be attacked laterally by members of the public? I mean, is there any state agency that can approve those questions before the referendum actually occurs?
If, is there a state agency that can approve them? I can ask our attorney if DPI or if there's some other state elections agency or something like that that could approve them.
Because you were right, the questions are complicated, and I guess I'm wondering out loud if someone could say, "That's too confusing, I think it should be struck," or "Not allowed."
Perhaps you could explain a little bit as to who we use as a resource for this? It is their specialty, correct?
Right, yeah. So our bond counsel is Tom Griggs. He's done our, all the referendums that I've been a part of here, and I believe was referendum bond counsel even before I arrived here 13 years ago. And the questions, the way they're, the operational one, the way it's structured, is very similar to what our last two referenda have been.
So you're not concerned then?
No, no, I'm not concerned. It's the same, it's essentially the same questions that were on the ballot the last two times, the operational side, anyway, the last two times with the numbers changed, the numbers and years changed. So getting back to will the taxes decrease if they both fail? Yes. So they would, taxes would go down in 2223, the current year, but we'd be back in April with both questions, again, as I stated, which would then, if those pass, would result in a tax increase the following year. And then the last question right now is will the numbers change when we come back again in April for either or both of these questions? And the answer there would be yes, the numbers would increase. By delaying operational funding, we would need more funding to get through 2025-26 in the three years that remain. And by delaying the capital work, prices will continue to increase. Right now, with inflation at 9%, some construction costs increasing more than that, pushing things by one year may mean an 8% to 12% increase in costs for the maintenance work and secure entries. What's illustrated here is the impact on our operational budget should the operational question fail. If it were pushed back one year, you can see that our current year's budget goes from a surplus of 1.8 million to a deficit of 1.2 million, and that's the $3 million that we would no longer have if the operational question fails. If we come back in April and the operational question were to fail again, you can see then that we would end up with a difference of about $7 million in 2324. So why is it important to consider this timeframe and the opportunity to go to referendum this November with both questions and come back in April if either of them were to fail? These are our only opportunities prior to the spring of 2024. Under state law, we're only allowed to ask two questions per calendar year, and those questions can only be posed on regular election dates. So these are the only two chances we would have before the bottom would fall out on the operational side and we would have a $7 million deficit for 2324 to address. On the capital side, these are our only chances in order to have any work begin prior to the summer of 2024, resulting in almost two years of increasing costs. So with all of these factors and the planning we've done over the past couple of years, now's the time for both questions to come forward, and we've planned in a way to do it all with minimal impact to the tax rate. So the next steps to make this happen are that the board would approve the two referendum questions along with the ballot order in August. From there, we would notify our municipalities of the referendum election to be held November 8th. And once we're settled into the school year in late September, we would begin our communications efforts to educate the voters on what would appear on that November 8th ballot. So it was a robust presentation, and we believe it shows all of the work of everyone involved over the past three to four years to get to this point. We want to take this opportunity to thank the FAC and everyone else involved in this planning effort over the past couple of years and the ongoing support of everyone involved as we continue to move our Fort Atkinson community forward. We'd welcome any further questions or discussion at this time.
Seeing the questions certainly makes things a little bit more tangible and real now. It's obviously been a tremendous process by a number of people, but seeing the actual questions and just like all the technicalities with them, you know, obviously a lot of work has gone in too before that, but to me, I kind of quickly realized that this is coming fast and furious here. So to me, this is, you know, obviously we've seen the questions this week, but it's kind of a turning of the page. Once we come in August here, there's a lot coming at us, and we turn the page to educational. So I am, as I was a member of the FAC, and there's just a ton of work that went into it, so to see this kind of come full circle is, I'm extremely proud of the people that put in all the work and dedication with this. So thank you for the presentation tonight.
A lot of good work was done, thank you.
I just had one question, and it's really just pulling out a point and clarifying it. You're saying that if both referendums are on the ballot and both pass, that will be a minimal impact to the tax rate, if any impact to the tax rate?
Correct. We're structuring, yep, we're structuring both the operational and capital in a way that the district's operational, or the district's tax levy, tax rate, I should say, the district's tax rate would remain stable. We structured the debt, we've structured the operational amounts in a way to make that happen. Along with, and as I mentioned before, our prior debt getting paid off and the increase in state aid that we're receiving, make room for that.
Thanks, yeah, I think that that's a really important distinction, that it's not pick one or the other and the tax rate stays the same, but both passing still keeps the tax rate the same.
Right.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Otherwise, what would then come before you in August? Is this plan for approval to go on the ballot in November? Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm still here. And while you're there...
There's no transition there, yeah. Next up is the...
Thanks very much, gentlemen, appreciate your time.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next up is the proposed budget for the 2022-23 school year.
Yes, this one will be much shorter because it's the second time around on this one. So next, I'll share the final draft of the 2223 preliminary budget. There were a couple of minor changes based on some staffing updates, but the only major change from last month is building in the referendum that we just discussed. So I'll not do an entire recap of the preliminary budget, as all those details were shared last month. Rather, I'll just quickly cover where we stand now with the preliminary budget and tax levy, with the referendum amounts factored in. This budget, once approved this evening, will then be what is shared at the annual meeting next month. Here we have a bottom-line summary of the operational budget. On the left, we see last year's budget with a surplus of 357,000. After we moved some current year expenses, or last year's expenses, onto the federal COVID relief funds, looking at this year, we're now budgeting for a surplus of just under $2 million, which is a result of the proposed operational referendum of $3 million for the current fiscal year. If we compare that to the projection from this January, you can see that we are $4 million better than that projection with this proposed budget. That's the combination of the $3 million proposed referendum and the approximately $1 million in attritions and other savings that we worked on implementing over the last six months to put us in a better long-term financial position. As a result of these changes, here we see the preliminary tax levy projection. If we look at the first line here, we can see that we're projecting a tax levy in the general fund of about $1 million more than 2122. That million-dollar increase is a result of the $3 million referendum, less an $800,000 decrease due to enrollment declines and capturing what would have been a $1.2 million decrease as a result of new state aid without a revenue limit increase. As I mentioned earlier, this state aid increase is one of the factors that allows for a possible referendum in November with a minimal tax rate impact. The other major factor that is part of the referendum planning is that our referendum-approved debt will be paid off, which is why the tax levy for referendum debt decreases even though we would be adding a capital referendum for the 2022. even though we would be adding a capital referendum for the $22 million we discussed earlier. All of this results in a total tax levy of just over $20 million, which, as we've already discussed at length tonight, translates to a projected tax rate of $10.92, or the same as last year. All of this has been part of our referendum planning, so let me illustrate this impact a little more. If we look at the tax levy rate history, we can see each of our recent three-year operational referendums shown here in alternating colors of blue and green going back over a decade. This year's projected tax rate of $9 without the referenda is well below where we have been over the past decade or more due to the increase in state aid without a corresponding revenue limit increase and the retirement of our debt. This drop is what creates the room for a referendum with minimal impact to the tax rate, as you can see illustrated here. In recent years, the state has approved funding private school vouchers with public tax dollars. The cost of those private school vouchers is passed through the local school district's tax levy, resulting in increased local taxes beyond the taxes used here by the public school. You can see here, shown in orange, the impact that private school vouchers have had on the local tax rate. Just to reiterate a point from earlier this evening, it's our intention with this referendum to maintain the public school district tax rate that you see here of $10.37, and that is what this preliminary budget delivers for the 22, '23 fiscal year. That public school district tax rate and even the total tax rate is less than it was 10 years ago. Finally, I just want to share a little bit about the major upcoming milestones in the timeline to craft our 22, '23 final school district budget. This evening, it's before you, the preliminary budget's before you for approval, and that would then be forwarded to the annual meeting next month in August. In September, we have our pupil count that impacts our funding and our state aid, and that gets certified on October 15th. Then the board, based on that state aid certification, would determine tax levy on November 8th, or November 1st, which, because there will be referendum, a referenda on the ballot on November 8th, there will be multiple tax levies approved based on the outcome of those referenda. And whatever then happens on November 8th, the appropriate tax levy would be sent to the municipalities for the upcoming tax bills. And that would conclude my presentation for the final draft of the preliminary budget, and I'm happy to answer any questions on that.
I have, is there any discussion or thoughts, questions?
No.
Once again, very well presented.
Yes.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Well, wait a minute. I, I just, clarify, clarification. The 10.37 or 10.92 tax rate, is that like per thousand of assessed value?
Right, that is per thousand dollars of assessed value. Yep.
Thank you. That's what I thought.
All right, if there are no further questions, we do have a motion for us.
Be resolved that the proposed budget for the 2022, '23 school year be presented at the annual meeting and that a levy to fund the budget be submitted to the electors for approval at the annual meeting on Thursday, August 18, 2022.
I'll second.
Yeah.
Okay, we have a motion by Ms. Bookta, a second by Ms. Reynolds, and a roll call, please, Ms. Haas.
Mrs. Bookta?
Yes.
Mr. Rogers?
Aye.
Mrs. Sully?
Yes.
Mrs. Reynolds?
Yes.
Mr. Nekram?
Yes. All righty, skipping to item eight, since we don't have any WASB or ACESA reports, is items for future board meetings.
Uh, yes, at your August meeting, among other items, you will be looking for your approval on the student and parent handbooks for each of our school buildings. And then, as you know well, after this evening's presentations, we'll be looking to the board to give final approval to the specific referendum questions in order of those questions for us to take to the electorate in November. Also, just a reminder that we will have two meetings in August. The first will be our regular meeting beginning at 6:30 and then followed by our annual meeting at 8:30, eight, eight o'clock, sorry, which is great news. Eight o'clock, the same evening in the very same room.
All righty, thank you for that information. And now everybody's favorite motion is upon us here.
Be it resolved that the Board of Education adjourn?
Second.
We have a motion by Ms. Reynolds, a second by Ms. Sully, and a voice vote, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
And those opposed. All ready, 8:11. Thank you.